Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Passaic County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 15th. Take a roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Devois.
Here.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Lapour.
Here. Announcement to open public meeting law.
Tonight's meeting was listed in the annual notice adopted to reorganization meeting and advertised in both the Herald News and the Bergen Record listing the date, time, and location of tonight's meeting.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me by placing your hand over your heart and saluting the greatest flag of the flag of the greatest country in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women that died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. Thank you.
Take a motion to approve the minutes of June 17, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
It was moved by Cruz.
Devois.
Devois.
Cruz and Devois.
Sure.
Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes. I just want to take a moment to apologize to my colleagues. This is a different sound system, and you all sound the same, so. Okay. I take a motion to approve the proclamations.
One of them. Second.
Moved by James, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
Duffy. I'm sorry. James.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes. Administrator.
Thank you, Director. First, we have a presentation of a proclamation recognizing Shadi Taha for being named Passaic County Coach of the Year in 2024-2025 for cross-country at PCTI, a proud Wannacue resident. I'm going to turn things over to Commissioner Cruz to present the proclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you. Guys, give Shadi a big round of applause. Always a great day when we can honor one of our own for a phenomenal achievement. From what I understand, it's the first time also that PCTI has ever won the county title in cross-country, so that's a testament to Shadi's hard work and his dedication to that institution, being a student himself of PCTI and now giving back to our great technical high school. But I think it would be only fitting if, before I read this proclamation, we hear from our coach, a man who has led us many, many, many years now and is truly the visionary for what you see today. So I'm going to call up our chairman, John Curry, to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner, and to all of our Commissioners, and thank you for the great job you do. You know, I don't normally attend a lot of these things, but Shadi, he's been part of our organization for so many years. I have known and knew his family. God bless his dad's old, I guess I can say I represent that tonight. I don't want to get emotional, but to see you that have grown as a great young man, married now with two kids, but more importantly, what you've always given to the community and what you're getting into tech as a phys ed teacher and a man named head cross-country coach and taking a young team to this championship. So I just want to congratulate you. We're proud of your work, and we're expecting another championship.
If you'll get a chairman. And so, Shadi, I'll ask you now to come up and join us as we read this proclamation into the record. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Shadi for being named the 2024-2025 Passaic County Coach of the Year for cross-country at Passaic County Technical Institute. Whereas Shadi is a highly respected health and physical education teacher at Passaic County Tech, whose dedication is promoting fitness, well-being, and academic excellence has earned him the admiration and respect of his students, colleagues, and community members. Whereas Shadi has demonstrated exceptional leadership and coaching ability in his role as the head coach of the boys' cross-country team, guiding the team to a historic victory in 2024-2025 season, winning the Passaic County Championship for the first time since 1990, as well as securing the division championship and the NJTAC title, both of which had not been achieved in several years. Whereas in recognition of his achievements and outstanding contributions to the sport, Shadi has been named Passaic County Coach of the Year for the year of 2024-2025 cross-country season, marking a significant milestone in his coaching career. Whereas Shadi's commitment to education, health, fitness extends beyond his professional life. He is a proud graduate of PCTI, the class of 2002, and is deeply rooted in the community of Patterson, Clifton, and now Wannacue. His personal passion for fitness through daily workouts and basketball serves as a positive example for others to follow. Whereas Shadi, his contributions to both his students and athletes continue to make a lasting impact on the community, promoting values of teamwork, perseverance, and personal growth that will benefit generations to come. So now therefore let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Shadi for his significant contributions that he has made to the County of Passaic and to the community, and let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes Shadi health, happiness, and continued success. Congratulations.
First off, thank you, County Commissioners, for this recognition. This recognition is truly humbling, and I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to my amazing athletes. All right? So it's not really about me, it's always about them. This award is a testament to their hard work, their dedication, and passion for the sport. The real winners are all of my student athletes. Their effort, their effort is driven by each other to succeed, and I always tell them, and I just, we just kicked off last week on our second season together. I told them, let's make it a memorable one, and like the chairman has said, it's time to repeat. This time, we're going for something even bigger, which is a state sectional title, which has never been done in our school. And yeah, and Chairman Curry, thank you for your wisdom. You've always been a great coach in my life, and I know it gets emotional and say I lost my dad. In 2016, I went to the chairman and I said to him, you know, if I ever get out of line or I need to be coached, I'm relying on you. And he's been an amazing coach, all right? And so I thank him, I thank my student athletes, I thank PCTI for putting me in that position to coach and to keep coaching. And last but not least, I want to thank my wife who's over there recording. She's there with the kids, day in and day out, and she lets me be there with my student athletes, doing what I love to do, and that's coach. Thank you again. I appreciate it.
Call your family up as well for a picture.
Just take a couple. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go a bit out of order and do a presentation of proclamation recognizing Jonathan Para, our county engineer, stepping down and taking another position with Wayne Township. We're going to call in Commissioner Bartlett and Jonathan.
Thank you. Thank you for your charge of the video. That's great. That's good. Well, it's a special frame for me to do this because so much of the work that we've got to do together over several years has been in that space of infrastructure and transportation, making sure Passaic County is the safe place to get around and to get fruit, and your work has been extraordinary in that regard. And also, Wayne resident, I don't know if I'm giving away any secrets, but I know where your next stop is. And I see Tim Rotten here in the second row, and I was talking to Chris Ragnon the other day, and a good trade is when both sides feel like they got something good out of it. And that's very much how Wayne of Passaic County feels right now, being becoming Wayne's municipal engineer, and in a couple of weeks, Tim joining us as Deputy County Administrator. So with that, let me read this proclamation to the record. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Jonathan Para as he steps down as county engineer for the County of Passaic. And whereas Jonathan received his Bachelor of Engineering in Civil Engineering from Cooper Union University, Master of Science in Engineering in Structural Engineering from Princeton University, a certificate of historic preservation from Drew University, and a wetlands delineation certificate from Reitford University. Whereas Jonathan is a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania, a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and a certified floodplain manager. And whereas Jonathan, a devoted husband to his wife Amy and a dedicated father to his street children, Maya, Evan, and Luke. And whereas Jonathan joined Passaic County on June 28, 2010, from Keller and Kirkpatrick, where he held the positions of Assistant Director of Structural Engineer, Senior Project Manager, and Senior Structural Design Engineer. And whereas Jonathan assumed the position of County Engineer on June 1, 2018, and has since worked tirelessly with his team to improve and maintain 246 miles of roadways, 121 bridges, bridges, excuse me, and 182 culverts throughout Passaic County. And whereas under Jonathan's leadership, major infrastructure projects such as the Westbrook Road Bridge, Eighth Street Bridge, Fairmont Avenue Bridge, Two Bridges Road Bridge, and West Bell Extension, among others, have been completed successfully, enhancing the quality of life and safety for residents of Passaic County. And whereas Jonathan's leadership has resulted in several prestigious recognitions, including the ASCE 2025 Project of the Year Award for the Fairland Avenue Bridge, the New Jersey Alliance for Action 2025 Distinguished Engineering Award, and the A C E C 2023 National Recognition Award for the Spruce Street Bridge, and the ASCE 2022 Project of the Year Award for the Eighth Street Bridge. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Jonathan Para for the significant contributions he's made to the County of Passaic and the community, and be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Jonathan and his family health, happiness, and continued future success. Thank you. I had to actually wait so damn long to get. Evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the proclamation. Since 2010, I've gained incredible experiences with the county as a department, first as Principal Engineer and then as County Engineer the last seven years. It's my honor to work in the county and be part of so many amazing projects and work with even better people. I want to thank retired County Engineer Sevedin for hiring me 15 years ago from the private sector. For me, there's a transition from a consultant engineer to the public sector engineer. As a consultant engineer, I was focused on a particular bridge or project, and it would locate all over the state or New York or whatnot. However, when I started working in the public sector, I started working besides just the project itself, I started working as if I'm the owner, and as the county is, they own everything for the last 187 years, and this could be another 20 years, meaning that besides focusing on the project, we have to review the project and how it impacts the immediate community, the surrounding livelihoods, towns, and the project overall in the interim basis and also on a long-term basis. The county has been, over the last 10 years, I was able to see how the county infrastructure has evolved and improved for each of the 16 municipalities. During construction, we would try to minimize impacts to the residents and the travel public because each construction project is a temporary convenience of the public, but it results in a permanent solution that would last a few generations. I also want to thank former County Administrator Anthony De Nova and County Commissioners for appointing me to the county engineer seven years ago. It's an awesome experience. My staff and I were able to accomplish over $400 million worth of construction projects of at least 250 of them combined on the county roadways, bridges, buildings, and parks. Some highlights include, like you mentioned, the proclamation. It also included, like, the UTPW, 50-plus miles of resurfacing, the ball fields and county parks, countless bridges and culvert streams, park projects. My staff is truly professional, and they made my job easier, which I will miss seeing them on a daily basis, and I am in terms of their friendship and so forth. I want to thank Jordan, who will take over for me on Monday, so any problems with the county roads, hope for it. I'd like to thank Andrew, Michelle, Mohammed, Juan, Michael, Irene, Christian, Henry, Barry, Tim, and John, my former staff, Chuck, Sid, Tim Florin, John, Isaiah, and Tom. I also want to thank two of the most important people I've been part of, Sandy and Orville. I have known Sandy since the day I started, and she's incredible in helping me in particular as I transitioned to the county engineering role seven years ago. I have worked with her as a consultant prior to coming to the county on a couple of work projects, so I've known her through the longest, sees us the wealth of knowledge of the county bridges with an unbelievable passion for the county. I appreciate it, and she's done for me over this year, it's probably close to 20 years. I also want to thank County Administrator Matt Jordan, former Deputy County Administrator Mark Seaman, all the department heads, county staff, county planning, board members, and of course, all the county commissioners, past and present. Saving the best for last, I want to thank my white baby for saying yes to me to that dance 26 years ago. We are blessed to have our three wonderful children, Maya, Evan, and Luke, and one happy puppy. Again, I want to thank anyone who look forward to recording the county from my new chapter in my professional life as a typical Wayne Township engineer. So thank you all.
Bless you. Bless you.
The way you have a game, Jonathan, you don't have to put up a grand stream.
Thank you, Jonathan, for your service, and it's nice to know that you're not going to be far away. Congratulations on this new chapter in your career. Director, as we are up county, I thought it appropriate to just give a brief update on various improvement projects going on in the Passaic County Park System in the Highlands region. Just as a, my slide. Just as a quick overview, the Board manages seven recreational facility, open space facilities up county, ranging from hiking trails, preserved woodlands, to traditional parks, and two exciting projects under construction that you might have drove by the entrance, the Highlands Rail Trail, which I'll talk more about later, and the Passaic County Archaeological Center, which is under construction in Ringwood. Excellent. So over the last three years, the Board has invested over $11 million in projects in the Highlands region, including an exciting acquisition of 100 acres of property directly adjacent to where we are right now called Springbrook Acres, the Highlands Rail Trail, the Archaeological Center, and the new inclusive playground up at Camp Hope in West Moford. Just by recap, and I know we've talked about the Springbrook Acres property acquisition a lot, using $2.5 million in Green Acres funding and $2.5 million from the Open Space Farmland and Historic Trust Fund, county purchased approximately 100 acres, historically a horse farm in the borough of Bloomingdale that we are now in the planning process of turning into the newest recreational facility in the Passaic County Park System. Just where we are in terms of next steps, there is a remediation process that the former owner is undertaking. We, as part of the transaction, escrowed approximately $1.5 million. That is going to be used for the remediation of the property, which I'm told should be completed sometime in the next six months. On a parallel track, tonight, we're awarding a design contract to T and M and Associates to start the preliminary design of what the park's going to look like. And with that, I know Mayor Demato is here. Mayor Demato is going to be a partner with the county and Bloomingdale residents to figure out what this next park's going to look like in terms of amenities and hiking trail. And Mayor Demato, if you want to come up and say a few words, and I know we also have Michael San de Mauro, the Business Administrator. Michael, thank you for coming. Looking forward to working with you.
First of all, thank you for hosting this meeting up county. I think this should happen a little more often so our up county residents can come out and view what's going on throughout the county. Several years back, well, two years ago, Tony De Nova called me and said, we're thinking about purchasing the horse farm and turn it into a county park. What do you think? So I thought about it for a while, and I said, you know, it's kind of a great idea. Everything for the county always happens down county, and we don't get any experiences from what's going on down county unless we want to travel. So with saying so, Tony also said that we would have input on what this park would look like, which I think is great for our residents, and I see some of our residents from the local lake community that borders the park, and Iosca Lake and Morse Lakes is over there. So I thought it was a great idea to have a county park in Bloomingdale. For one thing, it brings residents from other towns up here, which enhances our business district downtown, which will make our town more profitable. And also, hopefully, my vision would be, if it was possible, I would love to see the sheriff move his horses up here and make it continue to be a stable. So that would kind of bring back what it was originally, because I remember as a kid growing up, what the horse farm was when it was really active, until they had a devastating collapse there, and then from that point on, it just never rebounded back. Talking to some of our residents, they would like to see more fields. Our fields in our town are very, very busy. So I've been asked, can we have another soccer field? Can we have another softball field? Well, that's something that we would have to discuss and come up with a plan. Hopefully, we can do that. With saying that, I know when a county takes on a project, it's always first class. If anybody knows Dunleavy Dog Park and Memorial Park, the county built that in honor of former Mayor Jonathan Dunleavy, that park is used all the time, and it's kept very well. The upkeep is there, the county takes really care of their parks. If you ever went down to visit Garrow Mountain or Rifle Camp Park, they're beautiful parks and are used every single day, but the county really takes care of what they own. So I think that's a real plus, because if we drive past the horse farm now, it's not really desirable to look at, all right, to say the least. But if the county comes in and they build a park, it's going to be first class. I know it. So with saying that, I thank you for taking on this project. We support you, and whatever we can do to partner up, as you said, we welcome it. Thank you.
And Mayor, just to echo what you said, we do look forward to this being a community-driven process. Recently, we added a new park in the city of Passaic at Dundee Island, our first riverfront park, and I think what made that project special was that we, it was community-driven, what the amenities were going to be, and we did a robust public outreach campaign where there was boards and people got stickers and they could pick what they wanted, and then we created data through that to determine what we ultimately put in the park. So I look forward to that process taking place in Bloomingdale and the surrounding Next, as I mentioned, that you might have drove by and seen the entrance for the Highlands Rail Trail. This is a $3.6 million project where the county converted the old New York and Greenwood Railway trail bed into a rail trail funded in part by grant dollars from the NJTPA. Phase one is basically done. We're just waiting on signs, and then we'll have a formal ribbon cutting. Phase two stretches another two miles from FA Arakio Drive to Conklin Town Road in Wannacue that's under design. We hope to be out to bid early next year to get phase two going right as phase one is done. Next slide. In the borough of Ringwood, in 2016, the county acquired what was then the Harry S. Vreeland House. It's the only habitable building remaining on the former Vreeland Rhinesmith Farm, now referred to as the Highlands Meadow Property. Rehabilitation work, which is slated to be completed in the fall, includes building and site improvements for ADA compliance, building accessibility, and upgrades to the mechanical and electrical plumbing systems. This site is going to serve as the future home as the Passaic County Archaeological Center, where we're going to do programming and educational, public education and research with the county's full archaeological collection. And finally, Camp Hope, one of our most active facilities in West Moford, we added a inclusive playground, which I'm told is being widely used by residents in West Moford and Ringwood and Wannacue. We did that with an almost million dollar grant from Green Acres. The playground includes ADA accessible paths, parking, ramps, barriers, and guardrails, and other new playground equipment. So just a brief overview of the significant investment being made by the Commissioners in our up county region with a lot of exciting projects that are completed and a lot of exciting projects that are under design. So, any questions? No? All right. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk for the public hearing regarding the proposed expenditures for the 2025 Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund.
Thank you, Administrator. This hearing is pursuant to NJSA 40:12-15.3B regarding the 2025 Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund Award for Proposed Expenditures over $100,000. The following public hearing was advertised in the Herald News specifying, on Herald News on June 17, specifying the time, date, and location of the public hearing. Roll call. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Devois.
Here.
James.
Here.
Director Lapour.
Here. Motion to open a public hearing under 2025 Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund project, recommendations of $100,000 or more. Get a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Bartlett.
Second.
Second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devois.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Bit of a present desire to be heard on the recommendations by the Open Space Committee. Please step forward, state your name and address.
Director, seeing no one at the microphone, I move to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
State your name and address, please.
Pac Miller, 91 Morse Lake Road, Bloomingdale. I just would like to reiterate what the mayor said. No matter what you're going to do with the property, please remember that there are two lake communities that border directly on that, on that property, and show it the respect that we would demand.
So we have an opportunity to get into depth after we will talk about that during the public hearing. This is strictly on the recommendations of the open space awards. You'll have an opportunity to speak.
We'll have a public portion.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we have a motion.
So you don't speak now.
Did we go on?
Yeah, so County Commissioners, County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz. Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James. Director Lepore.
Yes. Take a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Bartlett. Second by James. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Okay. And that's all I have, Director. All right. Before we go further, I just wanna take this opportunity to thank Dr. Rose and his staff here at the Community College for hosting this for us. It's a beautiful facility. I'm glad some of us up here had a hand in, James, had a hand in doing this. So, thank you again to Dr. Rose.
My mic didn't wanna speak.
Oh.
Yes.
Representing Dr. Rose.
Thank you, Director. Michael Sarone, General Counsel, Passaic County Community College. Dr. Rose is unfortunately away on business, but on behalf of Dr. Rose and the trustees, I wanted to welcome you. Thank you for being here. Our Wanacue campus has grown over the years, in no small part because of the support of you, the commissioners. We have a full culinary program here in which you can get a two-year degree in culinary, from baking to being a cook. We have our music and fine arts program here, and with your help with the energy savings improvement program that we are undergoing throughout our campuses, if you look in the parking lot on this side, you will see that they're getting ready to install solar panels over the parking as well as on the roof, and when we're done, this campus will be completely solar powered, which is really exciting. So, so again, on behalf of the trustees and Dr. Rose, thank you for all the support, and thank you for coming up here and meeting up here. Thank you.
That was a JC PNL. I heard crying in the bushes. Okay, I'll take a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Capital ordinance 2025-06.
Bond ordinance providing for improvements to Peckman Preserve in and by the county of Passaic, New Jersey appropriating $2,018,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $1,875,000 bonds or notes of the county to finance the part of the cost thereof.
A motion to open a public hearing on bond ordinance 2025-06.
So moved. DeVore.
Motion made by DeVore.
Second.
Second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on bond ordinance 2025-06? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Seeing no one move to move.
Not yet. One more.
This also isn't the ordinary public portion. That's still coming later.
Let's come.
Coming up. I know I'm not a member of the public, but I wanna say, this is a terrific plan. I've looked at the design. This is a riparian park, but also right next to a terrific neighborhood, and the way that we're improving its walkability while also improving it as a, you know, a space that is as flood mitigation, I think is really nicely done. Happy to support this.
Yep, and I would just note that this ordinance is fully funded by Green Acres grants that the county has secured over the last two cycles.
We encourage that.
Director, seeing no one at the mic pertaining to this public hearing, I motion to close.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Motion to adopt bond ordinance 2025-06.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Bartlett. Second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Motion to resume the regular order of business.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by DeVore. Second by Bartlett.
James.
James. You do sound alike.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Anyone have any reports to submit? Okay, communications? There are none? Motion made to open the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Bartlett.
Second.
Second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address.
Now you got three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes. I don't need it.
And everything you say was a matter of public record.
I just wanted to add that this is special to me, buying this, because I was on the council at the time that it was being discussed whether it should or should not be in the Highlands Act. And the day before the bill was proposed and voted on, myself and Councilwoman, the late Councilwoman Sue Smith, we went down to Trenton and we lobbied Senator Martin real hard, and we got it in the Highlands Act, and now here it is, gonna be preserved forever. And like I said, it's a special day for me. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public wishing to be heard? Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Von Euler. I live at 76 Morse Lake Road, and I really did like everything that you talked about, your ideas about the horse farm. I thought they were all great. All of them were acceptable. I think that you missed something, though. We have like amazing wetlands over there. Every time I drive by, I see all these beautiful birds and wildlife, and I propose that you make that part of the park a wetlands viewing area or a wetlands park, just like the one in Allendale, the celery farm. They have like, I brought pictures. They're like piers that you can walk down and actually view the wildlife, and because this college is here and all the schools, it would be great for students to learn about nature and wetlands. Could be great field trips there. And this is like one of the platforms. I don't know, should I give this to somebody?
Yeah.
Heard some pictures. I just don't wanna see it wasted. That's Allendale. This is more than. Yeah. And this is all about the one half. I don't know if you can see, but it's gorgeous. Bless it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Mark Forrest, 11 Birch Road, Bloomingdale, and everything sounds really good, but my question is about accessibility and actually getting to the park. The road that's on Union Ave is extremely narrow and high speed of travel, and not really accessible to people that wanna walk there or ride bicycles to it. Would there be any consideration of making the road wider, making a sidewalk or anything that would make it so people could actually bicycle to it, walk to it? Just a consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? See what you start.
Hi, my name is Victor Wu. I live at 111 Holster Road in Clifton. I just wanted to thank your commissioners for your continued help and support. Just to make sure, this is the general open public. Just wanna make sure. Just wanna thank you for your continued support of cross-country of a high school up at Garrow Mountain. As the meet director and head timer for the state, you know, it's greatly appreciated that you help us use the facility and everything else, and also wanna mention that your staff at the County Parks Department, Jonathan Plon, and then the folks at the parks themselves, Chris and Tim, they're always amazing staff to have on hand to help us run all our events amazingly. So, having said that, I'll put on my hat as a head timer for the Passaic County Cross-Country Championships. We would like to invite you to come to our cross-country championships on October 23rd, which is a Thursday, to give out the awards for our county championships. If it's, you know, aligns with your schedules and so on and so forth, I'm happy to give you contact information and so on and so forth for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Kevin Lucio, 48 Blaine Vista Way, Bloomingdale. One of our concerns as part of the lake communities here is what you build there, changing classification of our dam and putting more economic pressure on us to do improvements to our facilities because of what you build below us, and that is a concern that we have as a lake community. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Mike Sondemeyer, 27 Matthews Terrace. On behalf of the residents and the mayor and council, we appreciate and wanna thank you for giving us the last two entrantsments of open space funding for our Bog Park Playground, which we recently opened up about a month ago. We also got a JSL grant with that as well, was about a million dollars of the project we did up there. If you get a chance, please stop by. It's beautiful. I just asked tonight if it does come up that we do allow us to reappropriate some of those funds to some of the other items in that park, so we can actually 100% complete that project. From the last three or four years, we've been working on it, so looking forward to a yes vote. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard? Okay.
Seeing no one, Director, move to close the public portion.
Second.
Do you wanna do it? All right, before we do that, I have a motion to close by Cruz. Second by DeVore. DeVore, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes.
So, just to emphasize again to all the Bloomingdale residents here, you know, the county's not looking to come in and inflict our will on what we put in there. We look forward to working with the residents and building something that the community wants to see. So, like I said, that public outreach process is gonna begin in the next three to six months. We'll have meetings. We'll probably have a meeting here, but I'll be sure to keep the mayor and Michael informed when we start our public outreach sessions, and we look forward to partnering with you and with the mayor and with the council on developing our next county park. So, that's it.
Okay. And the resident who spoke about widening the road and had a concern about that, these are the kind of things that the county is going to reach out to the community to make sure that we address all the concerns and make it a phenomenal park for everybody, especially when you take in mind the warehouse facility that's being built also. It's gonna have a lot of. We'll get all that information. Okay.
Just one other thing for Michael. That reallocation of funds is on our agenda today, on our consent agenda. And yeah, no, you guys came to us for open space funding. We provided it in a prior year, and then you were able to raise additional funds. So, the fact that you did that means we can apply that to do even more, even more improvements to that park. So, good for you, and we wanted to reward your going out and looking for other funds by making sure you could keep it and do even more.
We also got two major donations, one from Silicon and Fifth Patrick, the general contractors.
Thank you, everyone, for their participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have late starters.
Yes. Director Wu, we have three late starters tonight. The first one is a resolution authorizing the New Jersey Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Action Plan to be submitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The second late starter is a resolution authorizing a substantial amendment to the Passaic County Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2021 to permit the borough of Woodland Park to utilize the funds from 2021 to fund the Woodland Park Grimes Park ADA rent project. And the third one is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to T and M Associates to complete an update of the Passaic County Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan pursuant to NJ SA 48:11-5 et cetera. I would ask that those three resolutions, N 77 through N 79, be added to the consent agenda. In addition, we have one amendment to Resolution N 19, and that's we were asking to amend the Eighth Clause, which was initially for a total of $4 million. We're reducing that amount to $2 million.
Okay.
So, that's the amendment to Resolution 19.
19, all right.
And finally, I'm sorry. There's more. We are pulling resolutions, the following resolutions from the consent agenda, N 18, 35 and 74.
That's a good question.
No. The motion will be for the late starters.
Late starters.
In the amendment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'll take a motion to add Resolution 77, 78 and 79 to the late starters.
And the amendment.
And the amendment of 19.
And the amendment of 19. Moved by James.
Second.
Second by DeVore. Any questions? Go on, move on. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Next, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda, N 1 to N 79.
Can I?
Sure.
Do you mind, Director? So, the vote would be N 1 through N 17, N 19 through N 34, N 36 through N 79.
That's how the motion has to be had.
Yes, Director.
Okay, so.
Wait, did I do? Oh, okay. So, actually, no. So, N 36 through N 73, and N 75 through 79.
Okay. Let's see if I can do this. I'll take a motion for Resolution Number 1 to 17, 19 to 34, 36 to 73, and 75 to 79.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Cruz. Second by DeVore. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. This is what happens when you're surrounded by very good people. Okay. Moving on to new business. Need a motion for personnel?
Move the, second.
Motion made by Cruz. Second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes.
Before you adjourn, if I could just congratulate Tim Ropin, who was just approved as the Deputy County Administrator. It's lucky to be here.